We'll call this work session Monday, November 17th to order invocation given by Mr. Kenner and pledge allegiance by Ms. Tolliver.
Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask you to be with the mayor and council this evening as they go about the public business, lead, guide, and direct them in all that they do. These things we ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
So deliverance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first thing tonight is present employee service awards. Mayor?
We've got four employees that are ready to be with us tonight to receive their service awards. As I call your names, you would come forward, please. Josh Proctor. Josh, in appreciation of your five years of service in City Council.
Come on back, Josh.
Jennifer Sexton. In appreciation of your five years of dedicated service in City Council. In appreciation for your five years of dedicated service in City Council. Congratulations.
Number two tonight is a request for a little free library. And this is going to be at the Caldwell Park, correct?
Bynum.
Bynum Park, okay. Ms. Coleman, you want to come talk about that? That's the Row Chapter, Delta Gamma.
Good evening. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes to speak. On behalf of the Row Chapter of Delta Kappa Gamma International Society, it's for key women educators, I'm honored to speak with you this evening. Our organization made up of leading women educators from Jackson County is committed to promoting excellence in education and supporting meaningful opportunities that impact our community in positive ways. Recently, our Row Chapter partnered with Scottsboro High School, the agri-science teacher and their students, Mr. Josh Davis, you may know him, and they built our little free library for us. In addition to that, we have also partnered with Ms. Christie Ray, which is at the National Arts Society at Scottsboro High School, to decorate our little free library. Funding and the registration for the materials and all that come from our chapter president, along with financial support from the Row Chapter itself to officially register this little free library as a charter number globally. The Little Free Library Organization is based in St. Paul, Minnesota. It is a nonprofit dedicated to being a catalyst for building community, inspiring readers, and expanding book access worldwide through their global connection, values that align perfectly with Delta Kappa Gamma, missions of improving education, and enriching our lives. I'm here because our chapter seeks the city council's approval to place this little free library at Bynum Park. Initially, it was Two Sisters Park, but because of the convenience of it in various times, I understand it is necessary to move it. Row also is requesting that the city provide a sturdy stand and install it securely into the ground to ensure a safe, lasting presence for all the students and people in the community to enjoy. The approximate amount for equipment to post the little free library would be less than $200, and this would not include labor hours for installing the little free library. Once the library is placed, Row Chapter will proudly arrange an official unveiling or a photo for publication for our local newspaper to celebrate this milestone for Scottsboro. We believe that the little free library will become a treasured part of our parks, encouraging readers, sharing, and the joy of lifelong learning for all of our community. Thank you for considering our request and for your support in education and literacy in Scottsboro.
Thank you. Anyone having questions for Ms. Coleman on this?
Have you got a spot picked out over there where you'd like for it to go?
I have looked and I've walked. I have, there is an area up there, it's above the DFW section. It's actually when you first start walking around the corner, if you walk to the left, there's actually a bench right there, perfect spot for it, just to be right beside it. I think it's a little white bench.
I just want everybody to know that I am in Delta Kappa Gamma, and this is something that's dear to me, especially when it's children, reading, that's a big focus of our education program anyway, so it's something that I would love for us to move forward with. Thank you.
And I appreciate you working and encouraging these young girls.
Thank you.
Personally, I know my granddaughter's in your class. I appreciate you.
Ms. Kenner, is there any drawbacks you could see for putting them?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, far as installing it, though, Todd, is that something your crew could handle?
I would do that.
You and I, all right, all right. We'll put that on next week's meeting then. Thank you. Number three tonight, discuss the amendment to business license ordinance. Ms. Roden? Always good to hear you speak.
Yeah.
We took a look at the business license ordinance and the fee schedules. They haven't been updated since 2008, and we pared them back from 60 schedules to 18. Some of those we haven't used in years, and we kind of made the fee schedules a little more easier to compute because I know we have several people come up here, and it is kind of difficult if you're only doing that once a year, so we've tried to make it a little less complex. And in your packet you have where we've estimated this out, and then a copy of the rate schedule, and then who goes on what schedule by their NCS code.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Roden, on this?
I don't have any questions, but there is a lot to it. We weren't planning to vote on it next week.
We can put it off as long as you need it, that's for sure.
I think we need it a little bit longer so that we can go over some of this.
I say that, at the same time, of course, you know, that starts January 1, I guess. So, as long as you need this year, I guess.
I'd like to get on, man. But I did have some questions about some of it.
Let's see.
It's quite a jump on some of them, and some of them it's not.
Of course, next, Monday's the 24th, that'll be a meeting, but the next actual meeting will be December 8th. Would that be enough time, you think? Okay, we'll put that on December 8th's meeting. Thank you. All right, number four tonight, discuss the resolution for the urgent need CDBG project. Mr. Little, or Ms. Phillips, you can go over that one. He punted to you on that one.
We requested bids for the draining culvert along Scott Street, which is our CDBG project, urgent need project. It's recommended that the bid be awarded to CTS Excavations.
Anyone have questions on this grant, this project? Mayor, will you go over what we've already approved as far as this goes?
Well, this will be a joint project with First Baptist Church.
Yes.
And they're going to be a partner in this with us. I don't remember the exact amounts, to be honest with you.
Okay.
They don't have them in front of me right now, but it's something we definitely need to move on as soon as we can. This was actually an urgent need.
It's an urgent need about six months ago, wasn't it?
It was.
So, all right, we'll make sure we have those numbers in your packet for next week, and we'll get this. And Ms. Phillips, can you make sure that's emailed out to them this week, too? All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting then. Number five, discuss the resolution surplus cemetery department property. Mr. Goffey?
Yes, we have an excess of six mowers. They're still in functioning operation, but the cost of fixing all the little small things would not be cost-effective. So we would request those six mowers to be put on Gov. deals.
And they would go into your capital outlay account, right?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, need to clear my voice. That money would go into, you're just doing that on purpose, the cemetery department capital outlay account. But with that being said, I know there's six of them on here, you have enough equipment to do your job.
Yes, yes, yes.
You've already got your due ones.
We just received new ones.
Yes.
Just received new ones.
Okay.
I had talked to Benny about this earlier. He said, when we send budget here and he's going to need some mowers, and I brought up the postulation of it, he said, no, they won't talk to you on this from the cemetery.
Yeah, y'all are a little rough on those mowers over there.
It's not that we're rough on them, the cemetery will just beat them to death.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else having questions on these? All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number six, discuss the approval to purchase trucks solid waste department. Mr. Leble?
Each one of y'all have a packet in front of you. This is for a supervisor's vehicle, it's apparently in a '06 model. We have the funds available, as you can see, in our surplus account to take care of this. We just need to see if y'all will approve us using those funds for this.
Anyone have any questions on this? We'll put that on next week's meeting then. Just stay right there, though. Because number seven, discuss the budget amendment for Operator 3 for Solid Waste Department.
Also, on the same sheet, if you'll look at the middle of it, I'm requesting that you take the 1949-09 that is needed for this and remove it from the surplus account also.
And this is not adding a person, just changing?
Oh, sir, it's not.
Okay. Anyone have questions on that? All right, no questions, we'll move it to next week's meeting. Thank you. Number eight, discuss resurfacing of certain city streets. Mr. Little? I've got plenty of calls on this one today.
Plenty of calls. Yeah, you've got two budget numbers there. The first, of course, is $85,000, and that budget number would be to resurface where the street department, Todd and him, has replaced the culverts there on Legion Drive, and that would actually go up to Cecil, would pave that stretch. And then a part of that, I don't know if you've noticed, where Cecil ties into Broad Street, that's pretty beat up right there. Y'all have approved money for overhead detection on the signals, so we can mill that up, and it's not going to affect the loops. So part of that $85,000 would be to fix that back right there.
Okay.
The next budget number is, of course, for Phillips Drive, Hood Avenue, Gant Hill Road. And there is a 30-foot right away that is off of Gant Hill Road that the street department has to blade and take care of, and we would propose to go ahead and pave that while we pave Gant Hill Road, and you see a budget number there for that.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Little on any of these?
Well, we do, we bid it out now and maybe get it next year sometime.
Well, these budget numbers are based off of the county annual paving bid.
Is it unbeen had for the coming year?
It has, yes.
Okay.
It started October 1st, and then it'll go to the end of September of this coming year. Of course, this is not going to be done this calendar year, so hopefully, when the weather breaks in the spring, we can have these ready to go.
We've still got some out on bid that's supposed to happen this year, we just couldn't get papers to do it.
Well, I believe these bottom ones were all included in when Chick-fil-A was being built, but got cut out because of the cost of that lot.
Yeah.
So, anyone else having questions on these? Here, now, we'll move that to next week's meeting. All right. Number nine, discuss cell tower agreement from telecad wireless. Mr. Bates?
First, thank y'all for hearing me tonight, and thank y'all through this entire process, Mr. Little, Ms. Phillips, the mayor, the whole board, has put up with us for several months now in trying to work this project. Some of y'all may or may not know, we actually started this back in March of last year when we first started the discussions, and probably the first time we actually exchanged documents and paperwork was back in May. So the reason I'm here today is just I'm hoping for some clarification. I want to, we want to be good partners with the board, but we also are concerned in trying to move the project forward. The council last met, I was here on 8/18 and 8/25, we were under the understanding that the board approved the agreement with the contingency that we worked out, the location of the road, which we did. Back around 9/22/September, the mayor, Mr. Little, met with me, and we had a good meeting to kind of iron that out, and we actually resurveyed and laid everything out where that was supposed to go. And at that point, we thought we were then ready to execute the agreement and continue to move forward. We didn't realize there was other things, and as of recently, I guess it may be it's confusion on my part, in some correspondence with the mayor's office, there's still some conversation about actual, what I would term, I guess, renegotiations or changes to the agreement, and we thought that had been approved by this board at that last meeting. So we're just now trying to determine, what do we need to do to try and move forward? T-Mobile is very anxious to get us moving forward. We've tried to hopefully be very communicative with the board and all the staff, and operate in good faith to make sure we were doing the right things to negotiate it, and we just, we're not really sure at this point how we move forward.
Okay. Correct, I agree with you. I also thought we were through, and we voted, and so I'll leave this to Mr. Kenner and the mayor to go over whatever situations there are holding this up.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was looking at this, when I received the copy to sign, of course, we received a copy of the revised location, but it's not attached with the contract.
Okay.
But in further looking at the contract, I found a couple of places that it has the city responsible for things that we disagree with. I don't think the city should be responsible for those. Has to do on vegetative buffer in that paragraph, and it has lesser shall be responsible at lesser's cost for the maintenance and replacement if necessary. I don't see that as a city responsibility. That's one of them. We'd like to have a few more details relative to the landscaping. Additionally, is looking at it, there is nothing in there that I could find that addresses tower removal. You've got to understand, people in Scottsboro consider that cemetery sacred, and there's nothing in here that addresses end of life for the tower, whether it be 10 years or 70 years. And I don't think it should be up to the city to remove that installed equipment. And there's nothing that I could find, if you can correct me, but I could not find anything that indicated anything about equipment and material removal. And that's, you know, a concrete pad, a tower, that's going to be pretty expensive. And I can't in good conscience sign something that's going to endeth the city, if that's the case, to remove that. And as you're aware, I am, I do disagree with the terms of the dollars. I think it should be a percentage as opposed to a set amount. But there are a couple of other editorials, changes that we needed to make, minor, but changing from Josh's name to the city engineer. I don't think Josh will be here in 70 years. I hope you are, but I don't think you will. And also, item 23 miscellaneous B, we think it should be all information instead of truthful estoppel information, and Jackson County would be the appropriate venue for any issues. So, those are my concerns.
I, in addition, have some, too. The resolution to pass it was passed, and I interject that, if you recall, we needed to finalize the placement of the easement and the placement of the 10,000 square feet. We're talking probably an acre and a half when you get down to it, considering the rights of way. To my knowledge, we have agreed on roughly where it's going to be, but there's been no survey yet to attach. And not only has there been no survey attached, the area that was completely disagreed is still attached to this document. Would you like to see it?
No, sir, I see.
You see, that's still attached to your documents, and I can't recommend that the mayor sign something that has something that is not appropriate, because that has not been determined. There's an understanding, but we don't have a survey, and you're still attaching this document to these forms. You understand where my concerns would be?
Yes, sir.
Now, and in addition, just to make sure everyone understands, the, in this situation, the city would be acting as basically just the property owner, and you would still have to go, once everything is settled, still have to go to the planning commission, you understand that? And the planning commission could require buffers and things like that, and I believe at that point in time, federal regulations might come into play to address the mayor's concern about taking down the tower in 75 years?
May or may not regarding that specific item.
Okay. Planning commission required it?
I'm sorry, sir.
And if the planning commission required it, there would be no problem?
No, if the planning commission required that, so I guess to address a few of these concerns, one, I can't speak to why that exhibit's wrong. I don't have knowledge of that because we did not send that. But for full transparency, we actually went and paid for a full survey, supplied a full survey to the mayor's office and Mr. Little for review and approval, and that was our intent for what was supposed to be there. So it's a meets and bounds description, signed and stamped as a surveyor, and that's what we wanted to be the exhibit. So there was no intent to switch and bait or change something.
I'm not accusing anyone.
But I understand that you have to have the proper document.
I'm not accusing anybody of anything like that.
In regards to some of the language that the mayor represented, yes, there is language in there about vegetation, but that's our generic language where some jurisdictions, as you pointed out, could require a vegetation buffer or blockage that's outside of our area of control. So there was no intent to make the city pay for anything, but there was language for certain jurisdictions that have that. That may not even apply. So it's not an error, it's just something that we didn't discuss as a group in all our reviews of the agreement on the other subsequent meetings that we had. In regards to the renegotiation of the rent, that's another huge surprise. Again, that's not an error to the agreement, we've never proposed that, and we're just now getting that proposal now, so I don't, I can't make a decision on how that works with our group. In regards to the other sections, like Section 23D, that's simply a statement that says that the parties are represented by a real estate broker. That's typical real estate language that go in a lot of our contracts, is generic. Because there were no red lines or changes to it, we didn't strike it, we didn't know that it was offensive or need to be taken out. We would have, seven months ago, we'd have been happy to try to address this before the council voted on the first time. The second change about listing the city engineer instead of Mr. Little's personal name, again, we would have addressed that a long, long time ago. So our group, you know, is just concerned with, we've, again, we've tried to operate and be proactive without bugging Ms. Phillips and the mayor and Ms. Little's office, continually try to get these changes made or try to address these issues. Hopefully, they haven't seen it as us being a pest, but we've been trying for months and months and months. If I would have known the wrong exhibit had been attached before we got here, I would have resent that, I would have figured out what happened from that office.
Now, to be correct on that, this is the original, what we have.
Yes.
So we haven't been given a copy of the new stuff yet, because I assume it's only been to Mr. Little and the mayor, so the council hadn't got that yet.
Yeah, so I don't know how that...
Because, like I say, we approved it and thought we were done.
Yeah.
And so...
Yeah, so I mean, I would, I guess I would, to some of the points of the things the mayor brought up, I mean, I think there are things that could be tweaked or changed. I don't think they're material errors, and they're definitely things that, you know, had we known about before prior votes and prior things, we could have potentially addressed. The comment of rent and doing some percentage thing is not real specific, so I'm not sure exactly what the ask is, but it's definitely a much bigger item that we would have wanted to address many, many months ago. So we don't, I just, I just don't know how to try to move forward.
Well, I think that's what we're here for tonight, is how do we fix this? Because, you know, a lot of the things that were brought up tonight, I wish would have brought up before we got it to vote on, and we could have got that fixed then, and we wouldn't be in this situation. So, Mr. Kenner, I'd love for your suggestion, what to do to move forward as fast as we can, to not act in bad faith with something we've agreed with.
No one wants to act in bad faith. I think as far as I'm concerned, the survey being attached as an exhibit and the other document being removed from the packet satisfies my interjection at the time the motion was made.
Okay.
I think the other things can be, except for the pricing, the price is always negotiable up until the last minute, usually, but if neither side is willing, if you have a resolution on one side and you're not willing to budge on the price, then that stays the same. The other things, I think, can be handled in the planning commission meeting, like the tree buffer and anything like that.
Okay.
And the removal at the end of the period of time.
And you're right, to the point, a lot of times that's where it is addressed, if there's a removal language.
And then technically, if the planning commission denied, there's still an appeal, which everything would then come right back to the council again.
So can we get this signed so they can move forward to the planning commission? What do we need to happen to get this thing moving?
I think, you know, if the proper documents are attached with the survey, it can be done.
Mr. President, when we agreed to this, was there a price quoted at that time?
Yes, there's a price in there.
Well, if we voted to do it, we voted on that price.
I see it.
Correct.
So when I send the revised documents in, do I need to go any, I mean, who all needs to make sure I get a copy so that you can make sure it's approved?
If you would send me one, please.
Yes.
Of course, the mayor and the clerk.
And I would send Mr. Little.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. That'll conclude the meeting tonight. I do have one delegate, Mr. Womack.
Since y'all were talking about this cell tower, I own property that joins the cell tower.
Oh, I remember.
I've got about 88 acres that joins it, actually. And I was never notified that this was going in. I don't even know if I'm supposed to be required to be notified. So this is the first I've heard of it. And I know Mr. Brewer, who joins on the other side, he's got... And I know Mr. Brewer, who joins on the other side, he's got about 60 acres. I don't think he's ever been notified, because I lease his property. So, uh, I don't agree with the cell tower that went in where it's at. Uh, I know y'all have done okayed it or whatever you've done in the past, uh, but I think that's a flaw on y'all's part by doing it without notifying the landowners and the neighbors. Looking at all of y'all, which one of y'all would want a cell tower in your backyard? Think about that. That's what I'm asking y'all. I think it's been handled wrong, and I'm here to object. I think we need to have a meeting on it with the local landowners around there and get their opinion and take on it. Uh, because I don't know of many that's going to agree with it. Y'all are the city council, and I don't know, you know, it's going to depreciate our land value. Are y'all going to compensate everybody for their decreased land value? Y'all making profit, profit off of it. So, that's what I'm throwing out to y'all. Just think about that when y'all talk about this. That's what I'm asking you to do. I'd love to talk further with y'all about it, if y'all, y'all have all got my number, probably. So, if you need to call me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kimmer would like to respond, so.
What the city is or has attempted to do is enter into a contract with a company that if a cell tower is built, this, these terms and conditions would apply. That's in these documents. The cell tower company representatives have to go before the planning commission. The planning commission, prior to the meeting, through Mr. Little's office, would notify the adjacent or affected property owners. And they would have an opportunity to come before the planning commission and express their concerns.
Well, it's not got to that.
Yeah, you ain't got there yet.
Not got there yet.
Well, I just, I was misinformed.
Yeah.
So, I just found out about it today.
The planning commission can turn it down.
Okay, okay.
And then they can appeal, and if it gets turned down again, it comes to us again.
Fair enough, fair enough. I just wanted to make my, my thoughts known, because I heard about it today and I was kind of bumfuzzled about it. Because we hadn't been, you know, contacted, so... But I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Womack. All right, we'll go to reports. Mayor?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Oliver?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Ashman?
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and it's good to see all the guys at the fire department here. We appreciate y'all, and that, that's all I have.
Ms. Regent?
Well, I do want to say that I went to the Two Sisters Square Friday night, Saturday, Saturday night. And after that ball game, but it was, the music was great, the weather was great, the venue was great, and it's just a great place there. So, the more things they have, when you get out both good, it'd be great. Thank everybody for coming out. Appreciate you.
I got to spend a couple hours there yesterday. It is a beautiful venue, that's for sure. I hope everyone gets a chance to enjoy it. I appreciate everyone coming out. Remind everybody there'll be a meeting next Monday, 11/24, and then a work session on 12/1. So, we're adjourned.